The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen. Eighteen present.
Before him being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Before we begin prayer today, I'll ask everybody to join me in a moment of silence for Nelson Mandela and also the father-in-law of a friend of all out of ours, Tom Carnahan's father-in-law was, oh, he's lifelong military guy and he was killed by a mortar shell. So they're having his funeral this morning at Jefferson Barracks at 10 o'clock. So moment of silence for Tom Carnahan's father-in-law, his wife Lisa is mourning, and obviously Nelson Mandela. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We will spend with our regular order of business to take up our Courtesy Resolution Calendar, move for adoption of our Courtesy Resolution Calendar. Second about Alderman from the 22nd, Alderman from the 10th, it's like to approach the dais. Who's doing? Oh, 23rd? Well, this isn't good. I just found out that the president's allergic to cats. So I brought two of them up here with me. This, I think, is this Lola? Which one's this one?
That is Luna.
This is Luna. So Luna, say hi.
And her sister Lola.
And her sister Lola. So anyway, just real quickly, the other day I was invited to go visit the Animal House and they are a no-kill pet shelter. And I was moved when I went there. It was really a cool place to go. And I asked them to come up and give them a resolution, which just talks about that they, you know, they opened in 2010, that they, last year they had 100 cats. She's saying hi. They actually found 100 cats for families. They actually feed these cats. They have people that come in and love the cats and they build shelters. And that's kind of what the resolution says. And beside the resolution, the mayor also sent over a proclamation declaring that this be Animal House Day in the city of St. Louis. And it's got pretty much the same thing where his Animal House opened, the city of St. Louis in August of 2010 is dedicated to creating and maintaining an environment of friendly, no-kill shelter. Basically says the same stuff, but I just wanted to make everybody aware that this place exists. Everybody should go by there. They're on 59th Street. If you want to adopt a cat, Shane, they got quite a few of them there. Shane's waving to the cats. Anyway, I'm not going to stay up here long because Louis is allergic to cats, but I would like, I would like these guys to come up.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Brandon Jones and I'm the director of Animal House. It's a great pleasure to be here. Nice to see so many familiar faces and thank you for having us. Just a couple of quick words about who we are and what we do. We are a no-kill cat shelter, as Alderman Vacaro pointed out. We opened when Gaskenade closed, when the city closed its animal shelter. Stray rescue took the dogs, you may recall, and there was no one to take the cats. There were 75 cats at Gaskenade. So we felt that we could fill that void for animal care in St. Louis and we opened a shelter. That was three and a half years ago and we have adopted out over 500 cats to loving families at this point. We have over 200 cats at our shelter at any given time, all our strays, and about 98% of them come from the city of St. Louis. The city is our focus. Our goal is to be a part of the animal welfare fabric of the city and do what we can to help make St. Louis an even pet friendlier place than it already is. I have brought with me a few folks. Board member Mike Murphy, board chair Ed Troop, and Kathy Leonard, who is our friend and helper in getting the word out about what we do. We have left information on all of your desks about who we are and where we are if you'd like to come visit or call if you have any issues in your ward regarding cats. Thank you so much to Alderman Vacaro and to Alderman Vollmer, who is the alderman of our location. Oh, and I'm hiding the star attraction. We do have two little girls here, little tortoiseshell kittens who were rescued from the MSD location on Hall Street. So they are, I understand, second ward cats. And we are, we have been showing them off all morning. Again, thank you so much. I don't want to take any more of your time. We really appreciate being here. Thank you.
I would, I would ask, I would like to ask that we do it in bank. It's been a request that we pass that resolution in bank, second it by, who over there second? Alderman from the 24th? It's been moved to second it. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Hey, before Ed, before they, before they leave, Ed, we have to have you say something. I don't know if, if all of you know who Ed is, but Ed did really good in business as a young man. He's still a young man. And, and dedicated so much of his own personal resources and everything to saving animals in the city of St. Louis. He's the guy that created that Animal House Fund, worked to collect tons of money all across the city of St. Louis, worked with contractors to get money to back the fund and everything. And we really owe him an applause and a thanks for really working to make sure that animals have a second chance in the city of St. Louis. So let's give him a round of applause and I want Ed to say one thing.
It's very kind of you, President Reed. I appreciate that. St. Louis does and continues to have a reputation of being an animal-friendly city. It's important as we hold our reputation up to the rest of the country that we're able to embody that friendliness to our animals as well as each other. We're just delighted we could do our little part of it. And thank you so much for today's honorific. We certainly appreciate it and God bless you all.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Anyone want a cat?
Anybody want a cat? Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I can't, I can't have one. You guys hear my voice has already gotten scratchy just from that two, two minutes of exposure. But, but they are cute. They're cute. It's been moved to second it that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Turn to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, in-air introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 14th.
I would like to have as my honored guest today Senator Harry Kennedy from the fighting 14th Ward, Demetrius Al Alfred from International Association of Firefighters, Local 73, who is, that is also located in the 14th Ward, and Leroy Grant from Grant Communications, and Gary Otten from the Painters District Council 2.
Thank you. Any further? Alderman from the 12th, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to introduce my special guest today from the Carpenters District Council, Jeff Hans, and David Holmes from Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union, and also Anthony LaCia. I don't know if he was introduced yet, but want to introduce him as my special guest today.
Alderman from the 16th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to have as my special guest today Gina Hackenworth, who's with Klee Group, and David Holmes of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Yeah, I'd like to have as my special guest Celeste Reader from the Realtors and Lieutenant Tom Persig, who's the immediate past president of the Police Leadership Association. He serves as a current legislation chairman.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour, who is here somewhere.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up. Alderman from the 10th disappeared. Alderman from 13th, you recognize on approval of the Alderman from 13th, recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the November 15th and 22nd meetings.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have from as honored the mayor, the following correspondence. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission, the appointment of Mr. Anton Bockelman, who resides at 5312 Sunshine Drive and whose term will expire on November 21st, 2016. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely Francis G. Slate, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission.
I move to approve Anton Bockelman to the Civil Rights Enforcement.
Move by Alderman from the 16th, second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
With dispensable line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? With dispensable line items eight through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 266, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance authorizing the Treasury to enter into the amended and restated Missouri Securities Investment Program Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement and containing an effective date. Board Bill 267, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia and ordinance pertaining to the Compton Hill Missionary Baptist Church located at 3141 La Salle Street, having as subject matter the designation of the property as a St. Louis landmark containing definitions, design standards, a severability clause, and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Second reading. I mean, reference the committee.
To the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Board Bill 266, and to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 267, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill 226, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4010 through 66 West Pine, 26 through 38 North Sarah, 4001 through 13 Le Cleed, and containing a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 236, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement Authorizing and Directing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell the corporation's city leasehold improvement dedicated revenue bond series 2013 in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $26 million in order to fund all or a portion of the planting of trees and other landscape materials in the rights of ways certain city parks and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill 232, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from A, Single Family Dwelling District, and the F Neighborhood Commercial District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District and City Block 5100 for property at 7207 Piccadilly and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 233, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from B, Two Family Dwelling District to the J Industrial District and City Block 1768 for property at 3652 through 60 Marine and 111 Winnebago and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 234, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance pertaining to Special Use District establishing the Marine Winnebago Casiosco Warehouse Area Special Use District, providing definitions and finding pertaining to said district and further finding use and regulations for said district. Board Bill 235, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the Central West End Form Base District map from NCTI-1 Neighborhood Center Type 1 Zone to the NGT-3 Neighborhood General Type 3 Zone in City Block 3920 for property on West Pine and to further change the overall boundaries of the NCT-1 Neighborhood Center Type 1 Zone and the NG3 Neighborhood General Type 3 Zone and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 253, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 301 North Memorial Drive redevelopment area containing a severability clause. The following bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 231, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 111 Winnebago. Board Bill 252, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4367 Gibson redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 254, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2249 Indiana and 2245 Shenandoah redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill 255, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2417 South Ninth Street redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 258, sponsored by Alderman Conway and an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4206 Shaw redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill 259, sponsored by Alderman Conway and an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2622 through 26 Kings Highway redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill 260, sponsored by Alderman Conway and an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2051 through 55 Maury Avenue, 4561 through 65 Flat Avenue redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 262, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3306 Illinois redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill 263, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia and an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 2137 Nebraska redevelopment area containing a severability clause. Board Bill 265, sponsored by Alderman Moore and an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4272 West St. Ferdinand Avenue redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
With dispensable line item 14, Alderman from the 8th, you recognize?
Merry Christmas and happy holidays, everyone. I would like to move Board Bill 227 off the perfection consent calendar to the regular perfection calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
Alderman from the 1st.
Members of the board, I request that Board Bills 242, 43, 44, and 45 also be removed from the consent calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. 242, 243, 244, and 45. 243, 244, and 245. And place all those bills at the, at the, at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 228, sponsored by Alderman Conway and an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement Authorizing and Directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport First Rite of Refusal Agreement, AL 319, between the City and Brownsville International Air Cargo Incorporated, doing business as Bynational Air Cargo Terminals, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 202, sponsored by Alderman Conway and an ordinance pertaining to parking within the 2200 Thurmond Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the 2200 Thurmond, 2200 Thurmond Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the placement of residential permit parking only signs within the district and prohibiting the parking within the district of any vehicle which does not display the authorized permit containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill 221, sponsored by Alderman Moore and an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4548 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Board Bill 225, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1171 through 1269 Houghtonmont and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 246, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill 247, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and an ordinance dissolving the special allocation funds for the Le Cleed Powerhouse redevelopment area and the 1900 Washington redevelopment area. Board Bill 248, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and an ordinance dissolving the special allocation funds for 4249 Michigan redevelopment area, South Corondalet District Number 3 redevelopment area, 503 North Tucker redevelopment area, 3150 South Grand redevelopment area, and Skywheel, St. Louis redevelopment area. Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy. And Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance pertaining to street vendors amending ordinance 65061 by deleting paragraph E of section four of such ordinance thereby prohibiting street vendors in the area previously known as the 24th Ward Vending District. Board Bill 230, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer and an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the irregular portion of Patterson beginning east of Hereford and continually eastwardly 210 feet to a point in the city. Board Bill 237, sponsored by Alderman Tyus and an ordinance pertaining to parking within the 4200 through 4400 North Euclid Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the 4200 through 4400 North Euclid Avenue Residential Parking District, containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill 238, sponsored by Alderman Tyus and an ordinance pertaining to parking within the 5000 Maffet Avenue Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the 5000 Maffet Avenue Residential Parking District, containing definitions, a penalty clause, and an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 239, sponsored by Alderman Young and an ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as 706 Market Redevelopment Area, establishing the 706 Market Special Allocation Fund containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number 239.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of board bill 239.
Move by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Please proceed, Alderman.
I renew my, I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we perfect board bill number 239. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Board Bill 240, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Young and an ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan redevelopment area redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and market TIF containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number 240, Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of Board Bill 240, Committee Substitute.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I rise to oppose board bill 240. My mistake, I was talking during the previous board bill, but I also oppose that also. I actually sat on committee during the hearings of the proposed TIF. And one of the things that happened is that people came in and said, well, this is really not a TIF for Le Cleed Gas. This is really something for the developer. And that is true on its face. But when you look just a little deeper, what you find out is Le Cleed Gas, I actually hired the proposed developer to go find them a building, go find them a spot. They didn't look for anybody else. So this is a backdoor way to get development dollars and then to say, well, we're not getting it, not really, because it's going to the developer. The developer talked about, I asked them, did they look for anybody else? No. Who hired them? Le Cleed Gas. I know that we have other utilities that are in the community. Amaran U E comes to mind, which I believe is in the sixth. They own their own properties. If they were to ask for development monies, they would be before us asking for it themselves. Le Cleed Gas also has a method of raising revenues if they want to, which is they go to the Public Service Commission at ease. And I don't think that they ever really say no to them. And what happens is they get the increase and by us giving this TIF to them, we're actually taking away school board money, which I've been around here long enough. And I remember when the school board used to actually send a lobbyist to the Board of Alderman to lobby against TIFs. Unfortunately now, and I hate to include you in this, Mr. President, but the fox, the fox is watching the hen house now because we have the governor, the president, and the mayor who appoint these people. And so when I was asking what happened with the TIF commission, who voted no? The school board person didn't vote no. They used to always vote no. But, and that's what I think happens when you take away an elected board and you let appointed people run it, okay? So you got people voting against their own self-interest. People will talk about, well, if it didn't get done, they wouldn't get any increase in money. But at a time when we are continuing to lose money and we are always complaining about the money that school boards don't have in our school system and in general, these TIFs just really, really need to be taken a look at. In fact, a person from the comptroller's office, after they heard me on the, on the radio, contacted me and said, you know, you are right about these. And Illinois has a very different these. And Illinois has a very different kind of TIF, and our TIF goes to not only, it goes to personal property, it goes to, what else? Earnings tax, it goes to property tax. So Illinois doesn't do that. And the person approached me and said that maybe we as a board could look to go into Jefferson City to try to change these TIFs. But most certainly, the way they are, they're not fair. LaCleed Gas has lots of money, and they're not the most gentle person when it comes to treating our citizens. They have things where they would raise their rates, or, no, I'm sorry, not raise their rates. They will tell senior citizens, you gotta, because you've been a slow pay, you gotta pay this huge amount of deposit. The seniors are already making the payment, but they can't make these huge deposits. And so they wait till the summer, and they turn the gas off during the summer. And I really want to thank former State Senator Robin Wright Jones because she did pass something to try to prevent some of this kind of things. But I just don't think that anybody, any company like LaCleed Gas, and we can sit here and talk about that they're not really getting the benefit, but they are getting the benefit. Because if they didn't have this TIF, they would have to pay a higher rate of rent or purchase a building, and then they would pass that on to everybody. When we do a TIF, we pass the cost of doing business with LaCleed Gas, because that's who we're really doing business with. We pass that on to just the citizens of St. Louis. If they did a rate increase, which nobody likes, but that would be passed on more holistically to the people not only in the city of St. Louis, but also to the people, everybody who uses LaCleed Gas. So that would be a softer blow, and it also wouldn't take a swipe at our St. Louis public schools. So for those reasons and others, I rise to oppose this TIF. And I think it's disingenuous of people to say, well, LaCleed Gas is not getting a TIF. Sure they are. It would be the same way if we are told here at the Board of Alderman that we are not allowed to buy LRA land, but if we have our buddy buy the land and we get our buddy to get it for $50, and then they sell it to us for $50, that's the same thing. So we can play these games, and it is legal, nothing illegal, so I want to say that. That's the kind of illegal game, but it's really not fair. There were a number of citizens who came to, which is always interesting to me because we have hearings in the middle of the day. And so when citizens take their time to come out to let us know how opposed they are to things like that, that's interesting. Because I know that a lot of city councils that's in the county, they have night meetings so that their citizens have access. It's a lot harder for citizens to have access when they have to take off from work or come down in the middle of the day. So when I see a room pretty well filled with citizens who've taken off, I mean, they've, to me, let their wishes be known. And I think this is a mistake, and for that reason, I am going to be voting no. And that's why I oppose these TIFs.
All right, thank you. Any further, any further discussion? Alderman from 13th.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, you know, I too was at the committee meeting on this board bill, and I see it a little bit different from the Alderman from the first ward. The, first of all, the TIF was reduced from 8.1 to $7 million, about 15% of the total development cost, well within the policy that we've, we've set at the city. What we're doing here is we're retaining 555 jobs, 440 that are currently at the LaCleed Gas building, and then 115 that are at other locations in the city. In addition to that, LaCleed is in the expansion mode. They bought, recently bought another gas company. Their board is dynamic board. I think they're, you know, they plan to, to expand by acquisition. The site at 706 Market will allow them to get, what about, after it's redone, will be about 700 employees, could be accommodated there. And there are adjacent buildings that have some additional space. So this is a long-term commitment by LaCleed Gas, and it's, these are good-paying jobs. And to give you a little background on how Coleman Group got into this arrangement, they were hired, just like a lot of real estate companies are hired by firms, to fight, to find a different site. They looked all over. They, they liked 706 Market. LaCleed liked it. And so Coleman decided to work with the owner to purchase the property and develop it themselves. There was nothing nefarious about this. There's nothing unusual. There's nothing backdoor. This is a routine business transaction. So I, I think this building is also on the National Historic Registry. It is a tough, tough building to redo, and it's, and that's why it's been vacant for 10 years. We got a vacant building here in the middle of downtown, right across from City Garden. We've got an opportunity to put a Fortune 500, retain a Fortune 500 company that produces a lot of taxes and a lot of jobs, and, and we can do it and keep them here for a long time in the city of St. Louis. We need to vote to perfect this bill today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I want to thank Alderman from the 13th for reminding me of something that I forgot to say. First of all, so when LaCleed Gas moves out of the LaCleed Gas Building to this new building, we're just trading one vacant building for another one. So there's no assurance that we are going to have somebody in the LaCleed Gas Building. What is an assurance is we will spend tax dollars to do that. The other thing I want to remind us of is back in May of 2013, because people say, well, they can move and go to the county. Board Bill 34, City and County Intergovernmental Agreement, sponsored by Alderman from the 13th. The whole point was that, was so that we would not be competing with the county, which at the time Alderman said, it doesn't make any difference what it says in the, in the board bill, and I guess it really doesn't. Because we should not have to be competing with, oh, they will leave again. I think, I thought that was the whole thing of putting this thing together, is so that we can negotiate from a position of strength. At some point, these cities are going to have to sit down and stop just caving into everything that people say, if you don't do it, this is what we'll do. And I can give good examples of when we did do it, and then they went right ahead anyway and left. One of them comes to mind is the whole TWA situation, one of my no votes again. We gave all that money to Carl Icon, which I do not understand, because what did he do? Where's TWA? Is it out there? No. It took our money and left, okay? Well, early on in my career, we also did money to keep, it used to be Southwestern Bell. What are they doing? So we do this, they use up our subsidies, and they leave. So we are going to have to learn to negotiate a different way. I was in awe of the governor from Illinois. ADM is in my hometown, Decatur, Illinois. Actually, the owner lives there, has always made people from President Reagan on down, if you wanted to meet with him, he lives right around the corner from my mom. You had to fly into Decatur. ADM now wants, talking about moving some parts from Decatur. We all know that they want to go to Chicago. So, but they shopping in St. Louis, shopping here and there. But the governor did not play that game with them. He said, no, I'm not giving you any money. If you're going to go from Decatur to Chicago, you can do that. Why should I give you any money? If LaCleed Gas wants to move from the LaCleed Gas Building to another building, where we don't have any assurance that there is going to be another tenant that fits in there, and so if we come back here in a few more months and say, well, oh, the LaCleed Gas Building is empty now, we ought to do something for them, then we are paying in a game of chicken that we are losing, and our tax dollars are losing, and our citizens are losing. And I started out by saying that it was nothing illegal. I just said that it's disingenuous when you say they're not getting the TIF, because they're getting the benefits of the TIF. And I used the whole example of LRA to say that that's the same thing that we could do, and we would still be getting the benefits. So I do not say that they're doing anything illegal. I think that for me, it's a moral, when we look at our public schools and we keep talking about our schools and also about how we can improve our city. And everybody knows that without good schools, you're not going to improve cities, okay? You're going to always have people either moving when their kids are at school age, or you're going to be putting them in private schools. I was here when we got onto that board about charter schools, and now we're finding out that charter schools are not, a lot of them are not doing any better than the public schools. So we have to look at something that's different. We have to be a little stronger in saying no. And I can say, I walked the walk because I did stare down a TIF, didn't give it to them. I invite everybody to come to that place on Natural Bridge and Union, where if there was no TIF, there would not be a Snooks, except for there's been one for like 15 years with no TIF, okay? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize the close. I'll ask the marshals to keep the people in the gallery silent. Alderman from the 7th, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I will say that first of all, the comptroller, this bill was negotiated with the comptroller's office so that the eats taxes have been reduced to, on it. I would also say that the amount of the TIF was reduced after discussions with the comptroller. So I don't know why anyone from the comptroller's office would be discontent with this bill. As I said, the comptroller has supported it, particularly through her negotiations, to get a better deal for the city. This is a normal TIF bill, the same percentage of support that we provide for every TIF that comes through here. It is going to be used to renovate a significant building downtown for a one-user company, which is the way that building was designed. And while they may move from one building to another, the building they're moving from has an advantage in that parking is connected to the building, there are other tenants in the building, and the landlord will be able to rent the space to another business. The only way we continue to provide jobs in this city is by having a viable downtown and having businesses grow. This company that we're talking about has a potential to grow because they are in, as Alderman Wessel said, an acquisition mode. They are buying other companies. They can fill this building easily, and believe me, there are other spaces downtown that they could put people into. So I would renew my motion and urge your favorable vote.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 20th, that we perfect Board Bill number 240 Committee Substitute. There's been, been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingraxia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Villa, Alderman Behringer. 24 aye votes, 1 no vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the 7th, and perfected Board Bill number 240 Committee Substitute.
Board Bill 241 Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $7 million plus issuance costs, personal amount of tax increment revenue notes for 706 Market Redevelopment Project prescribing the form and details of such notes and the covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill number 241 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for perfection of Board Bill 241 Committee Substitute.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion?
This is a companion bill to the previous bill, and I would move for, uh, previous roll.
It's been a, it's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection.
New mark, so agree with, for the same reasons. I'm voting no on Board Bill 241.
Okay, there's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection. Motion carries.
Board Bill 227, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a public works and improvement program, the Building and Environment Project at Lambert Airport, consisting of capital improvement projects at a total estimated cost of $18,400,000, authorizing initial appropriation in the amount of $10,959,022 from the Airport Development Fund and containing a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number 227.
Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill number 227.
Been moved, been moved by Alderman from the 8th, entertain a second on, seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Alderman from the 8th, please proceed.
I would move that we adopt floor substitute for Board Bill number 227.
Is it on everyone's desk?
Yes, it is.
It's been a motion that we, that we introduce for floor substitute for Board Bill number 227. I entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 26th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 8th, you recognize?
I move for perfection of floor substitute for Board Bill 227.
It's been moved that we perfect the floor substitute for Board Bill number 227. Any discussion? Alderman from the 8th, you recognize the close?
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded, been moved and seconded that we, that we perfect board floor substitute for Board Bill number 227. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Board Bill 242, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and ordinance approving an amendment to the Taylor Carey TIF redevelopment plan, removing certain property from the redevelopment area and containing a severability clause.
Those cats got me good today. Somebody set me up. Alderman from the 2nd, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number 242.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the perfection of Board Bill 242.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 2nd, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 15th. Alderman from the 2nd, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
It's been, Alderman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I, I made a mistake. These were not the ones that I wanted taken off, so I'm also in support of these and will be opposed to a previous roll if there is a no vote, okay?
Okay, all right. It's been moved, moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill number 242. And as, would you like to close?
I just renew my motion.
Renew your motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Board Bill 243, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as the Carey Avenue Redevelopment Area and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 2nd, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number 243.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of Board Bill 243.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 2nd, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Opposed, motion carries.
Board Bill two four four sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan redevelopment area redevelopment project area and a redevelopment project authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and Carey TIF Incorporated and containing a severability clause.
Alderwoman from the second, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number two forty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill two forty-four.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the second, second about Alderwoman from the twenty-second. Any dis- any discussion? I think I might have to have Alderwoman from the seventh come up here and wrap this meeting up. Alderwoman, can I have the, can you? I'm trying, but I think my voice, I think I'm shot. You'll get me some benefit.
I renew my motion.
Been moved and seconded, uh, that we perfect Board Bill number two forty-four, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Board Bill two four five sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment authorizing directing and issuance and delivery of not to exceed two million one hundred thousand dollars plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for Carey Avenue Redevelopment Project and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the second?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, I move for the perfection of Board Bill two forty-five.
It's been moved and seconded that Board Bill two forty-five be perfected, all in favor say aye. Opposed, by your vote, you've perfected Board Bill two forty-five.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill two twenty-four committee substitute.
The Alderman from the thirteenth is recognized on the third reading consent calendar. Alderman from the thirteenth.
These women disturb me. Okay, uh, third, I move we, um, I move we third read and final pass the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass the third reading consent calendar, all in favor. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingraccia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Behringer. Twenty-three I votes.
By your vote, you've passed the third reading consent calendar, we'll dispense with item eighteen. The President in open session will affix his signature to these bills so that they may become law.
Board Bill two twenty-four committee substitute.
We will dispense with item twenty. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution one seven four sponsored by Alderman French, the Board of Alderman directs the Public Safety Committee to convene hearings for the purpose of examining and investigating the events, conditions, circumstances, and failures that led to the wrongful arrest of citizens in the city, of citizens of the city of St. Louis.
The Alderman from the twenty-first is recognized.
Thank you, I move that we send resolution one seventy-four to the Public Safety Committee.
It's been moved and seconded that Board Bill one seventy-four go to the Public Safety Committee, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider it done.
Resolution one seven nine sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the two thousand and fourteen Central West and North Special Business District Budget.
The Alderman from the twenty-eighth is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, members of the board, I move, um, for unanimous consent, I believe.
Any objection to unanimous consent, hearing none, please proceed.
Um, I, I move to pass resolution one seventy-nine confirming the budget for the Central West and North Special Business District.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth and seconded by the Alderman from the twentieth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by your vote, you have adopted resolution one seventy-nine.
Resolution one eighty sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the Cathedral Square Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, I move to adopt resolution one eighty, uh, to approve the Cathedral Square Special Business District Budget.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adopting resolution one eighty, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by your vote, you have adopted resolution one eighty.
Resolution one eight one sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the two thousand and fourteen Washington Place Special Business District Budget.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, once again, I move to adopt resolution one eighty-one, which is the Washington Place Special Business District Budget.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth and seconded by the Alderman from the twentieth that we approve resolution one eighty-one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
By your, oops, all opposed, by your vote, you've approved resolution one eighty-one.
Resolution one eight two sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the two thousand and fourteen Westminster Lake Special Business District Budget.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, I move for adoption of resolution one eighty-two, which is the Westminster Lake Special Business District Budget.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth and seconded by the Alderman from the twentieth that we adopt resolution one eighty-two, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by your vote, you've adopted resolution one eighty-two.
Resolution one eight three sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the two thousand and fourteen Waterman Lake Special Business District Budget.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, I move to adopt resolution one eighty-three for the Waterman Lake Special Business District two thousand and fourteen budget.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-eighth that we adopt resolution one eighty-three, it's been seconded by the Alderman from the twentieth, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by your vote, you've adopted resolution one eighty-three.
Resolution one eight four sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, the Board of Alderman approves the two thousand and fourteen East Loop Parkway, Parkview Gardens Special Business District Budget.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, and finally, I move for adoption of resolution one eighty-four, which is the, uh, East Loop Parkview Gardens Special Business District Budget.
All right, it's been moved that we adopt resolution one eighty-four by Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, it's been seconded by the Alderman from the twentieth, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by your vote, you've adopted resolution one eighty-four.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
Following resolution was reported out of the Housing Committee, resolution one seventy sponsored by Alderman Valmer Enterprise Zone for Tile and Stone International.
The Alderman from the tenth is recognized on resolution one seventy.
I again request that Alderman from the eighth stay away from my microphone, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, uh, resolution one seventy, I move for passage of resolution one seventy.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the tenth and seconded by the Alderwoman from the first that we adopt resolution one seventy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by your vote, you've approved resolution one seventy.
Following legislation was reported out of the Legislation Committee, Board, the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission appointed Lisa Gold, Jay, Justin Meehan, Joanne Morris, Carol Robertson, and James T. Morris.
The Alderman from the twenty-third is recognized on the Civil Rights Enforcement Committee or Commission appointments.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, I, uh, would like to, uh, recommend that we pass the following aforementioned names to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission.
The Alderman from the twenty-third has moved that we adopt the mayor's appointments to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission, is there a second? It's been seconded by the Alderman from the twenty-fourth, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, by your vote, you've adopted the appointments to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions.
We'll dispense with item number twenty-three announcements.
Monday, December the ninth Personnel Committee Meeting, ten AM in the leisure room. Tuesday Ways and Means Committee Meeting, nine AM in the leisure room. Also on Tuesday Public Employees Committee Meeting, ten AM in the leisure room. Friday Full Board Meeting, ten AM in the chambers, that's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the tenth.
Thank you, Alderwoman on the dais. This Saturday, December seventh is Christmas on the Hill. Come down to St. Ambrose Parish and you'll have carriage rides, shopping, you'll have Babbo Natali who is the Italian Santa Claus who's a little slimmer in dresses and Gucci leather. It's a very, very wonderful event, the stores will stay open for a little late night shopping, come by and enjoy a day on the hill, thank you.
Alderwoman from the first, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, because that is the correct term, for all those people who can't get used to women, um, I'd like to, uh, just, uh, announce that one of our colleagues today, um, a few days ago celebrated a wonderful occasion, I couldn't come because I was sick, but he turned, can I say it out loud? He turned eighty years old and had a surprise birthday, and he was surprised, and that's a good thing, and he's the member that's been, served at this Board of Alderman longer than all of us, and I just wanted us to, uh, take a minute to wish him a very, very happy birthday, because he's still the youngest one around, and I wanted to take a time to say happy birthday to Alderman Freeman Bosley of the third ward.
This is the second time that I have been tricked, and I never, ever had any thing going on around my birthday before, but I guess after eighty years, uh, somebody thinks about something. Uh, I just want to thank each and every one of you so much, and I really appreciate all that you did, they did a surprise birthday party on me, and many of the older persons were there, and I had no idea, I wanted to go home and look at television, because I had a cowboy play that was come, that I had recorded, and my son just carried me all over the city in such a circuitous route, it just angered me, but I was being nice because he wanted to spend a little time with his father. And lo and behold, by God, when I got down to the place where they had this party, they had a great big ice sculpture there with my name on it, and I was so mad and upset that I didn't even see it when I walked through the door. And when I went inside, there were so many of the older persons that I've had a relationship with over all these years inside saying happy birthday. I guess if I wasn't such an old cooter, I would have probably cried because it really, really made me feel good, and I just want to thank all of the Aldermen for thinking about me, and, and I wish you hadn't brought that cake on television, because now everybody will know that I snuck around and ate something sweet as a diabetic I'm not supposed to. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
We're not going to film the cutting of the cake, nobody will ever know. All right, any other announcements? Alderman from the ninth, you got something going on.
Thank you, Madam Alderwoman at the dais. Um, this weekend is the annual Cherokee Antique Row Cookie Spree on Saturday and Sunday, the seventh and eighth. Come down and eat some cookies, buy some antiques, walk to the other side of the, of Cherokee over Cherokee Station, uh, there's activities going on over there also. Are you going to touch on the Soulard Parlor Tour?
You can do it.
Okay, and, and this weekend is also the Soulard Neighborhood, um, Parlor Tour, which is going to be Saturday and Sunday too, so there's a lot going on, um, I guess all over the city, um, but it's, it's, it's all good. I happen to be one of the older persons present at that party, and I'll tell you what, the other cake was so hot, I was afraid, all the candles that were on it, that the fire department was going to have to come and, and put it out, so, uh, whoever did this one was much better, there was one candle, the other one, numerous candles, and I don't think they ever made eighty, but there were a lot of candles on there, and it was a hot one when they lit it up, so, thank you.
All right, Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to invite everyone to come to South Grand on Saturday. Saturday morning we'll have The Grinch on South Grand at Grand and Arsenal, at Mokabe's Coffee Shop, and you can get your picture taken with The Grinch, it's at nine o'clock.
Okay, Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Few more festivities going on in the city, uh, tomorrow is the Central West End Window Walk tomorrow afternoon, weather permitting, um, they'll have reindeer and all kinds of stuff there, and so come to the Central West End, and tomorrow is also Winter Market at Skinkert de Oliver, and there'll be lots of handmade crafts and goodies to get there to get a little jump on your holiday shopping, so, please join us.
Alderman from the twentieth.
Very much, um, so Alderman Ortman sort of touched on this, but I want to make sure that it's clear, we're going to have obviously holiday weather this weekend, but everyone is invited to come out not only to the Antique Row side for the festivities of the Cookie Spree that have been there for, what, twenty-nine years, uh, but also invited to come over for the Holiday Print League events that will be occurring for people to shop on Cherokee Street because there are places to shop on Cherokee Street, and I know the Alderwoman from the sixth ward is al- also going to stand up because she has some things going on this weekend as well, but on the Cherokee shopping side that will be this Saturday from ten to six PM, thank you.
All right. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, I want to have, uh, a few congratulations, uh, placed because we had a very active week, past week in the nineteenth ward. First, I want to thank Harris State College for their recognition of World AIDS Day, there was a great program called Rip the Red Carpet, the students and faculty, uh, produced this, it was great, it was well done, they had support from the K D N Foundation, Salvation Army, St. Louis Community, uh, Empowerment Foundation, uh, and one of the segments I thought was really good because it incorporated a lot of knowledge and understanding, but also taught a lesson, and there was a segment called Dress for Less, and so the Salvation Army partnered with K D N. Army partnered with K D N, the young people came in, figured out an outfit that was under twenty dollars, and modeled these, I tell you, it was incredible, so we're putting them on the right path of, for financial understanding for their futures. Also, I'd like to also thank the Urban League Guild for having a wonderful networking event in partnership with, uh, the Chamillion, uh, Technology Company, uh, they raised, uh, some money and also collected a lot of toys to assist us with our community and the needs of our community. Uh, also, we want to recognize, uh, as many times as we can Jerry Schlifter, he just received the St. Louis Award, I think it's about fifteen years too late, because he, he's the one who brought us the Missouri Tax Credit Program, so we need to give him a round of applause, Jerry helps this city. Uh, I want to compliment my colleagues, because we don't do that enough, we don't compliment each other on our, on what we do, and we're doing a good job, irregardless of what people are upset about, there's a lot of positive things happening all over the city, and most especially I wanted to give a shout out to the eighteenth ward, the twenty-second ward, and the twenty-sixth ward, if you're not paying attention, they are doing it the right way, and they're really showing progress on behalf of the north side of the city of St. Louis, and we know we got to give a shout out to Joe Rhodey, I mean, he's just trying to outdo all of us right now, with Ikea, uh, Whole Foods, Cortex, and B J C Projects, so, um, that means a lot for the economy here, and we get caught up on some of these things, uh, that we have to do in order to move some things forward, but at the end of the day, the next twenty years for the city of St. Louis is going to be good for everyone, because there's a way for everyone to be included. And finally, uh, I wanted to definitely give a special recognition to our board clerks, Donna and Lisa both have had birthdays very recently, uh, Lisa your Saturday, Donna you were around Thanksgiving, and then I want to recognize Jennifer, who just had a birthday a couple of days ago, and, uh, we have a cake for you guys to share, happy birthday.
Sounds like there's going to be a lot of cake around here after this meeting. Alderwoman from the sixth?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm making an announcement on behalf of Alderman Shane Cone, shop Dutch Town for Christmas this Saturday, December seventh, from nine a.m. to nine p.m., um, Murbs, Twice Blessed, Urban Eats, and a variety of other restaurants, there'll be photos with Santa at eleven and three, carolers, music, holiday treats, and more, and I would be remiss if I did not also mention that Lafayette Square is having their holiday parlor tour on Sunday, it starts at the Park House and the park itself, thank you.
Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, I just want to, uh, say on behalf of the rest of the Aldermen and Alderwomen, uh, a shout out to our colleague Sam Moore, who's still recovering from his accident, and hope that Sam gets back down here soon, because we missed his bricks on his desk.
Well, his bricks are still here, he's, his body isn't. Alright, any other announcements? I have a couple, first of all, reminder that we are collecting canned goods in lieu of a Christmas party for Operation Food Search, and the red container over here needs more cans, so be sure that you bring in something to fill that up for the people who are most needy in our neighborhoods. Also, on December eighteenth, the police will be holding a meeting, a public meeting at Julia Davis Library at forty-four fifteen Natural Bridge, where they will be talking about the transition from the state to city control, and they will be taking public comments at that time. Also, after the first of the year, the captain will be coming to a public safety meeting on, I believe the date is January eighteenth, it's the second Thursday, or I think in January, to talk with us about issues, first of all, you know, he came before and presented the crime stats, he's going to do that again, he'll be talking about other issues that are relative to the transition that we're going through right now. And I believe that is the end of the announcements. Excused Alderman, Alderman from the thirteenth?
Thank you, Madam President, I move to excuse the Alderman from the fourth, fifth, and eleventh wards due to necessary absence.
Alright, it's been moved that we excuse the Alderman, any, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I have, I forgot one announcement, I think that a couple of us at least in here will be watching, um, an important game tomorrow between Auburn and Mizzou, and I hope that you will all be supporting your favorite team in this conflict that's going to be going on in Atlanta, so, go team. The Alderman from the thirteenth is recognized on the adjournment motion?
Thank you, Madam President, I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten a.m. December fifteenth.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, we're not meeting on Sunday?
It'll be your last meeting, so, get it right, alright. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn till December thirteenth, all in favor, say aye? We stand adjourned.